All right, let's see if we get up. Hopefully. All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Smith to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day, for the blessings of life, the opportunity to be in your world, to share friendship, to share time. But most of all, Father, we ask you to bless us. Bless us as we make decisions, give us wisdom, grace, and guidance that we might lead in the design that you have for us. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, everyone. This morning, we can introduce our new Commissioner, Darren Monroe. Congratulations.
Darren Money.
Darren Money? Good gracious. I've had this sinus infection for five days. I've been fighting it. So give me, I'm gonna make a few mistakes today, I'm sure. Sorry, Mr. Money. Glad to have you here. Uh-oh. All right, we got Commissioner Monroe, Smith, and Harrison President. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you got the minutes from October 14th, 2025. Entertainer motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, minutes, October 16th, 2025. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimonies. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff that may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Good evening. Mike Jaffe?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak. I just wanted to take a few minutes to recognize the Commissioner over my area, the town of Poetry. I'm currently the mayor of Poetry. And I just want to lift up and encourage David and his team. We signed some number of years ago an interlocal agreement that has provided our little town with just incredible resources through their efforts to help us try to maintain some of our roads and other things. And I just want to say that they're doing just an absolutely fantastic job between them and the Sheriff's Department and others who we depend on because we're a tiny little town. We don't have a lot of money. We don't have a lot of resources. And so we really depend on these relationships to get things done. And so I know we're way down in the corner of the county. We kind of get forgotten about by a lot of people, but not by the people who live there and certainly not by myself. So I appreciate David and others that support him, as well as his guys out at the barn. They're doing just a fantastic job. And I appreciate Judge your support of that relationship and of David and others that helped to make this happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak today? Not, I'll close the public testimony. No old business, new business. Commissioners, you got the consent calendar. We've got a change on item two, next to the last line. The line item 21 dash should be 671-35000-3115. So an entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar with that one change.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action items, approval accounts payable.
Motion to approve payables?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion, the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments.
Motion to approve budget amendment?
Second.
Got a motion, the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel.
Motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion, the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, proclamation for domestic violence month for October 25, 2025 in Hunt County. Kristin, you want to say anything before we read the proclamation? Or would you like to read the proclamation?
It's totally up to you, Judge. I don't mind if that's easier for you.
I'm gonna let David read it for me if I have to.
I think Darren do it, get his feet wet real quick.
There you go.
Well, I just want to thank City of Hunt, or the County of Hunt County for honoring this month for us. Last year, there was 161 victims lost to domestic violence across the state of Texas. And so each year, we like to honor those people and remember those, but also know that our fight is still ongoing. Last year, also, Women in Need served 706 non-duplicated clients. 176 of those came through our shelter, and 71 of those were children. So the need's great. We are always thankful for your partnership in the county, and we're thankful for the proclamation as well. If you don't mind, I don't mind reading it, or we can have David do it.
Either way, I'm good.
Go right ahead if you'd like to. I'll save David.
I know it's kind of lengthy. All right. Whereas every person deserves to live a life in safety, dignity, and respect, free from fear and abuse. And through this proclamation, we affirm to survivors of domestic violence that they are not alone, that our community stands beside them, and that we are committed to supporting their journey towards healing and hope. And whereas domestic violence remains a pervasive and devastating issue that impacts millions of women, men, and children across the United States each year, threatening the health and safety and well-being of families and communities. And whereas domestic violence takes many forms, including physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, spiritual, and economic abuse, this strips away an individual's sense of privacy, security, and humanity. And whereas domestic violence knows no boundaries, it can affect individuals regardless of their age, gender, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, ability, sexual orientation, or faith. And whereas in 2023, Texas saw 205 Texans killed by their intimate partner in stalking homicides. This includes women, men, and children, and those diversities and backgrounds. These deaths underscore the urgent need for prevention, intervention, and supportive services. Whereas these latest stats also remain sombering, on average, nearly 20 people per minute in the United States experience physical violence by an intimate partner, equating to over 10 million victims annually. Health, emotional, and financial tolls from domestic violence affect survivors and ripple through our communities. Whereas organizations such as Women in Need provide critical services, including shelter, advocacy, prevention education, and long-term support, partnering with law enforcement, legal systems, and community agencies, and volunteers to form a united front in the fight against domestic violence. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Hunt County Commissioners' Court, do proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Hunt County, Texas. We encourage all residents to join in raising awareness, supporting survivors, working together to create a community where every individual can live free from violence and fear.
Thank you. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Y'all want a picture or... Okay, action item number two, proclamation proclaiming November as National Alzheimer's Awareness and Alzheimer's Caregiver Month. Trina's not here. Steve, you want to read the proclamation for us?
Trina not being here, I think most everybody knows she has taken the position at the Children's Museum in Commerce as this new director, so it's probably why she's not able to be here today. Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is an irreversible and progressive brain disease that slowly erodes precious memories, thinking skills, and ability to perform simple tasks. And whereas every 65 seconds, someone in the United States develops Alzheimer's, and worldwide every three seconds. And whereas worldwide, nearly 50 million people have Alzheimer's or related dementia. And whereas in the United States, there are 7 million people living with Alzheimer's disease. And unless a cure is found, it is estimated that as many as 13 million will have the disease by 2050. Whereas nearly 2/3 of those with Alzheimer's disease are women. And whereas Alzheimer's is the seventh-leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas Remember For Me is a nonprofit organization that benefits Hunt County caregivers caring for loved ones who are diagnosed with Alzheimer's or dementia. Remember For Me offers compassion, education, and support to caregivers and families as they embrace loved ones on this new journey. And therefore be it proclaimed November 20, November 2025 as National Alzheimer's Awareness Month, as well as Alzheimer's Caregiver Month in Hunt County, Texas, past this 28th day of October 2025.
Thank you, Steve. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, Hunt County Delinquent Tax Collections Update by Purdue. Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mauch. Patrick?
Good morning, Judge Stovall. Commissioners, just good to be with you all this morning. I just want to give you all a quick update on the status of delinquent property taxes. Just gonna go over a few items. Number one, some of our collections activity. Number two, where the 23, three taxes stand on the overall collections. And then just a big picture of where everything stands overall. So with that, if you turn into your packets, I did want to just touch on, just very briefly, our mission. Some folks like to gloss over things like missions and core values, but I think it's important. So, you know, it's embedded on us, and we don't take this lightly, that, you know, we represent the county. And it's very important that we treat people with respect and that we, you know, deliver and provide results. And so that's embedded in our mission. And so I like to tell folks, you know, we're firm, but we're fair. And so every time we're, you know, talking to folks in the county, we keep that in mind, that, you know, we represent the county. And we appreciate y'all's trust in us to continue to do that. So I did want to share that with you because I think it is important. The next item is overall collections activity. I'm just showing you guys just some stats over the past 12 months of what we've done for the county to collect the outstanding amounts due. 2,500 phone contacts. I'm not sure how that came to an exact perfect 2500 number, but it did. Letters mailed over 12,000, setting up pay agreements with folks when, you know, we call them and, you know, they're on hard times, and the goal is to get it collected. And so we work with people to set them up on pay agreements where we can. Over 3,200 address updates, 97 suits filed, 19 bankruptcy filings. Again, we, every day, we are monitoring the bankruptcy courts to see where folks are filing, whether it's businesses or individuals into bankruptcy. We file into those cases to preserve the tax lien, to protect the dollars that are due Hunt County. And, you know, through the bankruptcy, we get those paid. And we, that's something we do as part of the service to the county.
So they're not dischargeable in bankruptcy?
If they're Chapter 7, they are, but we try to get it collected. And, you know, it's subject to the bankruptcy judge and the court, but we do everything we can to get it in there. So as long as we're in the game, we got it filed, then we have a chance to get it collected. And then we put 37 properties on the tax sale during that time period. I would add here that I didn't put this, but I, you know, I regularly go out into the community when we get our new rolls turned over, and I go, and I do site visits with businesses. You know, I'll, we'll get the businesses that have delinquent property taxes due. And I'll go and just talk to them because sometimes, you know, we have large corporations, the letters get sent to Chicago or whatever, and the folks on the ground don't know what's going on. And sometimes we can get that collected just with a simple conversation. So I just want to let you guys know that I do that on your behalf. The next page showing the overall status of the 2023 tax collections. Overall, we collected over $996,000 of base taxes that were due for that particular tax year. That brings your overall tax collection percentage up to 98.41%. That little red sliver is what's remaining. We continue to collect that, and that's as of the end of September. And we will continue to aggressively collect those dollars, but at the end of September, that's where we are on that particular tax year. So the next slide shows what was turned over to us for 2024 taxes. Again, the tax cycle is somewhat backwards-looking because the 2024 tax year didn't go delinquent until February 1st of this year. And then it doesn't get turned over to law firm till collections till July of this year. So July 1st, we were, of the 2024 tax year, it's a little over $2.1 million that was turned over to our law firm to collect on that tax year. And that's base tax. And as of July 1st, your tax collections are at 95.51%. That red sliver on that pie chart is what's turned over to us. We are aggressively collecting that. And I just looked at it the other day. I think at the end of September, about 25% of that amount's been collected. But I will keep you posted on how that's going.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, the 95 and 98 numbers?
Correct.
Does that fall in line with what you see typically across the board? Or are we normal?
It is. I mean, it varies, is the true answer. And I know that's not the answer that you want to hear, but, you know, smaller rural areas that we represent, they're honestly harder to collect because you've got, you know, just rural areas, tracts of land that have been passed down by generations and, you know. And then you have kind of higher socioeconomic, thriving cities and metropolises. And you've got, the median comes a lot higher, and people have the ability to pay. And so here in Hunt County, you kind of have, kind of a, it's somewhat of a mix, you know, depending on the area. So it's on par with what we see in other areas. But you're gonna have a different answer every county, for sure. The next page, this shows the overall breakdown through the 2024 tax year, overall of all the tax years amounts due. And if you look here, I do like to, want to point out, 28% of your delinquent property taxes are in deferral. And again, I've brought this up before, but just so we're all grounded on what that means, a deferral account is a resident homestead property that is either over 65 or that qualifies for disability. And that particular owner will go to the appraisal district, fill out the required paperwork, and they qualify for deferral. Those taxes are delinquent. They remain due, and they accrue interest. But I cannot collect on those taxes. I can't call, I can't file suit to collect on those until the deferral comes off. And the deferral comes off when, you know, the property is sold to a person that doesn't qualify for deferral, or, you know, it's inherited by somebody that doesn't qualify for it. And so that's, you know, once the deferral comes off, then we can pursue that. But that's, 28% is wrapped up there. And then I do want to point out on the dollar range, you know, 85, less than 85% of the taxes due are less than $1,000 in base tax due. You know, we collect on those, we call, we send letters, but the cost of a lawsuit can be around the same amount, $750 on average. So we're mindful of that. We really try to work top-down on the rolls, but just want to kind of point that out. And then lastly, feel free to call me if you have any questions on anything, but I would open it up to any questions you may have on what I presented.
Commissioners, any questions?
As always, Patrick, we appreciate the updates. It's nice to get this and see where we stand with everything. So appreciate what you guys do representing us.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's trust in us, and we're gonna continue to do a good job for you and collect everything we can.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you all.
All right, action item number four, a change order on the radio contract to accommodate the spare parts that are required per our maintenance contract and for the interop radios, interoperable radios installations that were done incorrectly on the original contract. Virginia?
Good morning. So this change order is, like I said, it's just to go over some of the pieces that we didn't have in the original contract for the interop part and for the spare parts that we're supposed to have on hand per our maintenance contract.
What's our interop part?
Interop is like being able to work with other agencies, so being able to talk to Rockwall, to Greenville, to the surrounding counties and agencies and stuff.
Thank you.
And so I did bring Barry with TROT to kind of give a further explanation of all of that at a higher level than I can speak on. So this is Barry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So to elaborate a little bit more on what Virginia said, the change order does include critical spares. So there's important pieces of equipment that if they break and you have one local, you can get it installed. The radio system can stay up for first responders and with minimal downtime. So those are important. And typically, when a contract is signed early on, you may not know all the parts and pieces that you need. And so typically, that's done down the road. But clearly, once the system goes live, you want to have those parts on hand. So that's a good part of this change order. The other part is the interoperability. As Virginia said, this is so that the county can interoperate with other counties, the city of Greenville, and others, as it comes to, you know, working mutual aid and maybe going into their county and helping them if there's a tornado, or them coming in and helping you. So this equipment, again, sometimes you can include it in the contract at the very first, but sometimes you don't really understand what all your needs are as it comes to interoperability until you're getting close to getting the system cut over. And so that's kind of a part of this. And so that's the second part of this. And there's also some services included in getting that interoperability installed, configured, and working so that dispatchers have access to those radios. So that's, in short, I can answer any additional questions y'all may have about that, but that's essentially what the change order includes.
What kind of cost is associated with this?
Let's see here. It's $157,000 and some change. And it's almost a half and half on what the critical spares are and the interoperability. I will say this, that as part of this radio project, the partnership with the L3 Harris facility over at Majors Field, they were the ones that purchased the, they're called the cores, but they're the brains of the radio system. There's two of them, two racks of equipment that are expensive. And the spares that are associated with those are being purchased by them. The county isn't having to buy those spares. They are buying those spares, and they'll have those spares available for that equipment. The spares that y'all are purchasing in this is for your tower sites, the repeaters, some GPS receivers, some various things that are at your sites that if they go down, you can have, Harris will come in, install that, turn the other one in for repair, put it back in the spare list or spare inventory.
In the original procurement, did we buy any spares?
No, sir. No, sir. And, you know, these contracts typically, I'm working on another project with one of your neighbors, they included some spares in the proposal, but we had to rework that whole spares list because a lot of them are radios, and they decided, you know, we already bought spare radios. We don't need those. So it's kind of 50/50 on how this typically works, but no, there were no spares in the original contract.
So the list that's been created at this time, is that a county-generated list? Is it built with L3 Harris? Is there any kind of teaming and partnering about how usage and what fails?
Absolutely. So we, you know, we definitely lean on Harris to say, hey, of the parts and pieces, there's a lot of redundancy at these sites already. So if this piece of equipment fails, this one picks up. But if this one fails, you still need to replace it, right? And so it's important to have spares in certain cases on hand, not a spare for everything, clearly, you know, especially when there's a lot of redundancy built in. But yes, Harris came up with this list. We looked over the list, we, to understand what all the parts and pieces are, and that's how it was developed.
Why wouldn't these be included, like in the warranty on the radio systems?
So the warranty really covers the services and not the equipment, per se. Now, let me back up there, actually. There is two refreshes, it's called. Just like when you have a laptop computer, it doesn't last that long. Or maybe it lasts five or six years, if you're lucky. So just like that with the radio system, there's switches and computers that have to be replaced at year seven and year 14 is typical. And those costs for that equipment is in the maintenance service contract. But the spares are things that are gonna help you get to year seven and then to year 14, things that could break along the way. And things happen. You know, we've seen, we've seen a couple little things break, and so they've had to send them in for repair and get it put back in. But yes, the maintenance contract does have those refreshes. That equipment is in there for that. So this is a smaller subset of equipment.
And you're saying this is a necessity for us?
Yes, sir. I highly recommend it. It, you know, if you don't have the spares, you could have a portion or some features on your radio system that are gonna be down for, you know, maybe three to four or five months. And that's not good, you know, depending on what they are. For instance, if a repeater at a site goes out, just one repeater at one of your five sites goes out, it takes the other repeaters out of service because it could create interference. So now you're down a whole channel. So 25% of your system is kind of down on capacity, let's say. So if you have that repeater there in your inventory, you know, L3 Harris technicians will come out, they'll pull the old one, they'll put the new one in, get it configured, get it running, you're back up, full capacity, send the other one in for repair, and when it comes back, you put it on the shelf as your spare.
Do they have a shelf life?
Well, no, not most of this equipment. You know, batteries do, you know. So there are a lot of backup batteries at the sites and things like that. But these items really don't have a shelf life, per se.
So it's mostly hardware?
Yes.
Not really any encrypted information?
No, no, it's not batteries and things like that. It's definitely... It's definitely like a GPS receiver for timing, and it's like a repeater, tower top amplifiers and things like that that they shouldn't, they won't go bad over time.
Technology's not going to outrun them, like, you know?
No, not these. But those items that get refreshed at year seven and fourteen, those items will be, that's why they do it, is because they're kind of end-of-life as far as they can't take a new operating system because they're just too old, you know, like the laptop example.
I'm assuming Barry, what the list is, it's not stuff that's just going to sit on the shelf and hopefully get used one day, it's stuff that potentially we will be needing at some given time?
That's absolutely true. We didn't go overboard on it. I will say, you know, spares, there's clearly, y'all have spare radios as well, you know, somebody drops theirs, it breaks, you've got some spares. These are all on the hardware on the network side, and let's say, for instance, you take a lightning strike on an antenna, you have a spare antenna, they can go up and put it up and get you back on the air real quick. If you don't have that locally, again, the time can be much longer. So this is all about keeping that radio system up, you know, a hundred percent of the time.
So eighty-three thousand or almost eighty-four thousand dollars of the change order is the interoperability equipment services. And I wasn't on the court at the time, so this might just be ignorance on my part. I was under the impression that that was the key part of the selling point of why we purchased that. Why, was that not included in the original pricing?
So the interoperability, these systems, when you go to being P-25 and with all your neighbors being P-25 and in that seven-hundred, eight-hundred megahertz band, that interoperability becomes much easier because those, you know, others have radios that work in those bands. You can have, y'all have multiband radios. So you can actually operate in the band you're in today and in your new band. So that's even better, you know. But the interoperability, the actual hard equipment that's installed at your sites, part of this is actually some newer technology that Harris came out with earlier this year. They refer to it as an XL Bridge. And that's a radio that can be put out at a tower site, and a dispatcher at the console level at dispatch can actually change the channel, or talk group it's called, on there and talk on different talk groups to like Rockwall, where before you could, one radio could only talk on one talk group. Now there's all this flexibility, additional capacity, let's say, so that you can talk to not only law, but maybe now you talk to fire, and then maybe you can talk to public workshops, you know, you can talk to many other people and not have to spend more money on radios. So that's really what a majority of this is here. The system did have interoperability, some interoperability built in, and half of that has been installed, and that was in the contract. This is some additional to help talk to pretty much all of your surrounding counties. So y'all can listen to what's going on there and have a good idea of what's going on, you know, what's coming, if there's a police chase, if there's a big fire that's, you know, crossing county lines, things like that, so.
So it's an enhancement to the interoperability?
That's exactly right. It is an enhancement. Yeah, that new equipment came out, I believe it was in March, wasn't it?
So, kind of just to touch on what Barry's talking about, it's like Greenville, we can get onto their system because we are all P-25 and everything, so we can talk on their system and they can talk on ours with some logistics and work between the two of us. But if I'm driving through Greenville, I can't scan. I can only listen to one system at a time. I can't, so like before, like I know you're familiar with it, you could kind of scan all your neighbors and just know what's going on and still hear your dispatch. Without these inter-op radios, we can listen to one system. So if you leave Hunt County's system and you jump over to Greenville's system to see what's going on, now you're going to miss critical traffic that's happening on this channel or on this system.
And that's what this software here is going to allow us to be able to do?
Yeah. It'll make it to where we can seamlessly scan across systems.
And this is a new software or wasn't, so it wasn't available when we bought the radio system?
The XL Bridge is new software, and it's actually cheaper, a whole lot cheaper than buying a radio, so like AMR, so that they can work with our system when fire cuts over. They had to go in and buy a radio for every single talk group. So I think he's got something like twenty-five plus radios, those are about ten to fifteen thousand dollars apiece. He's got however many of those just to be able to talk on all the talk groups on our new system. So instead of buying ten to some odd radios, we're just going to buy the one radio, put the XL software in it. It's like Greenville, for example, I think that Captain Starnes gave me a list of, I don't know, fifteen-plus talk groups between different interops, traffic, whatever different talk groups he's got going on. So that would have to have a radio for every single one of those. With the XL Bridge, we'll be able to drive it and change the channel.
Is it unlimited then?
Well, I think sixteen.
It's sixteen, but they're actually, they've got a roadmap to do some additional features, and that should expand over time. So they seem to be spending their research efforts in this piece of equipment versus the other is very limited, you know, one radio, a lot of money to talk on one talk group, so.
And the XL Bridge will also have encryption capability on their roadmap, I think in the end of this year, maybe?
Or, I think it's early next year.
Okay. So they'll have the encryptions, like all of Greenville's channels are encrypted. So if, with what we have currently, we can't talk to Greenville. They can talk on our system, but we can't talk to them because everything's encrypted. And the way that the technology works is we can't encrypt their traffic coming off their system into ours.
But with this piece of equipment, you can.
And so you're going to run into that with a couple of different agencies, not just, Greenville's just the closest.
How long will it be before this is outdated? I mean, I don't want to, if we okay this today, I guess I'm asking, you know, when you come back next year, we got this bigger, greater thing, and, I mean, how far does this go?
Well, to be honest, I'm surprised Harris hadn't had this piece of equipment for many years. It's something that, you know, not just Hunt County needs, you know, one of your neighbors to the south, a little bit to the east, is buying quite a few of them as well. I think this technology will last a long time, you know, this is definitely not going to be outdated like a laptop computer, I'm going to go back to that. This should last the life, you know, fifteen years, you know, easy. And with the design that we worked on, you're going to have the ability to talk to all your neighbors, and so clearly, the counties around you aren't going to change, so you're going to, you know, you're putting the lines of communication in that you really need going, you know, long-term. It's not like you're leaving somebody out.
So this could potentially be a fifteen-plus-year upgrade then?
Sure, absolutely. The radio may, you know, the power supply may go out.
Yeah, the update, or the, what, the technology won't be outdated.
The technology should not be outdated.
Yeah.
The diagram I gave y'all is the interop diagram that we have. And that just kind of shows where all that equipment that's in that change order is going to go, like what tower site it's going to go at and who it's going to support, what agency.
So obviously, it's a needed tool. We wouldn't have bought it in the first place and keeping up with the enhancement, so, but everything I'm hearing is spares were things that we chose not to buy in the beginning. Philosophy, right? Do or don't, right? The interoperability is enhancement that makes sense to go do, but that means these weren't budgeted in the original. So where's the budget come for this hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars?
That I don't have an answer for.
I think it's called contingency.
Where are we at for the cut-over date?
Right now, we're looking at December third, knock on wood. We've been doing testing all week at all the sites. We've identified three issues that we need to take care of before we can cut over that are critical to operability or operating. And so we addressed one of them this morning, and it's taken care of. We just got to go double-check that it's taken care of. And then we've got two other things that are in the works of getting fixed, and I've been programming radios every weekend, so we've started installs for fire departments, and that's moving along pretty smoothly, not any hiccups there. So we're looking at December third, barring any major issues and those two concerns that we're working on.
How did the tests go on the inbound, in building coverage around the county?
They went really well. I mean, there were clearly, as you get to the edges of the county, that's where you start getting the weaker signals, right? And so when you get down to Roy City and you have a massive high school down there, right, there were some, there were a few coverage problems in that building, but, and then some of the other schools where you're right at the edges of the county. But commerce, everything in commerce just rocked and rolled. Same thing with Greenville. Anytime you're really close to a tower site, I think we missed one test in the whole hospital.
We were in the basement.
And it was in the basement, you know. So that was outstanding. But the coverage testing really well. There were only a handful of areas, and it's really hard to cover every building. As you know, you walk into a lot of buildings just with your cellphone and it doesn't work. Some people walk into their house and it doesn't work, and that's not a huge structure. But when you're walking into a hospital and going into a basement, that's a lot of attenuation on the signal, and it did really well. Of course, the tower right here at the sheriff's office is serving that area, so, but.
I think most of the schools were really good. We had one or two that had a couple issues, and we've given the schools their coverage testing results so that they know where their weak spots are in the school, so they know, you know, if they're in that area to hold it up high. But we're also-
I thought they could do a bypass or something on their phones and with Wi-Fi or something.
We are, we have been working on the Wi-Fi. We're trying to get the schools on board with making a dedicated Wi-Fi service. Some of them aren't able to do it just because of funding. I don't know how Wi-Fi works, but however that works, some of them have said no due to the funding and how much it would cost to put that extra Wi-Fi coverage in the schools. But we're still working on some of them to get that Wi-Fi set up so that whenever anybody with a county issued radio will come in, and it will pick up that Wi-Fi. So our IT team has already done it across the county buildings. I know it works in the sheriff's office, I had tested it over there in the courthouse, but.
Gee, thanks.
Sorry. I'll put it on my to-do list. But to, like, as soon as you walk in, like, if I lose service, it pops up on my radio and shows, oh, you've connected now to Beyond is the service that it connects to. So if you see that Wi-Fi, whenever you look at your phone, it's like HCSN 250, and that's what that Wi-Fi is, it's dedicated to the radios. And I know that the hospital district's also been working on getting it in their, all the hos, well, in their hospital.
And as far as around the lake, up around Wolf City, some of the locations that sheriff and you were concerned about were able to get?
So I sent some deputies out to play Marco Polo, and they hit every corner of the county, they went around the lake, they went down to the state park. One of the other radio administrators that works with me, he went all the way to twenty and, was it twenty and thirty-four in Terrell, with a handheld in his car before he lost me in Caddo. So, I mean, the service is absolutely phenomenal compared to what we have currently, and, you know, it's definitely going to change public safety for us, but.
I thought we had the ability when we went to another county that we could be on their radios and then we could still communicate back to ours.
So there is a feature called ISSI that'll allow you to do that. That has to be set up with them, and that's not something that is, you know, is a must for cut-over, per se. So we've identified, you know, here's some things on the punch list that have to be done for cut-over, clearly. These items over here can come after, that's one of those items that's over there. But clearly, before you guys sign off on final acceptance for this radio system and make that final payment, all those punch list items need to be done, you know.
Okay.
So there's no getting around that one.
Okay.
But you're right, there is that Beyond feature, it works on the radios, and it also works on your cellphone. So if you load that app, it works on Apple, it works on Android, there's even a Windows-based version that you could put on a laptop, but.
Kind of like Active 911 then?
Yeah, we're going to use it like for mobile command.
Virginia, not to piggyback, I want to go back to the financial side on this. So we just got through finishing out a budget season. Did we know about this need and the cost associated with it during that process?
I've been trying to get this change order from L-3 for about nine months. I didn't know what it would cost, what all we would need. This diagram that we gave you has changed about five times, just based off some of the new technology. We've worked really hard to get it as low as possible. I've sent it back to them three times in the past week just to get, to make sure all the discounts and everything are applied correctly based off of our contract pricing. I think they've changed it all three times. So I actually took it off the agenda or tried to because I didn't think we were going to have all the numbers finalized by today, but I got them back really late Sunday night, so.
But we had no placeholder or anything like that, that we could have thought about or planned about at that time?
I did not know enough about it to be able to put a financial amount of money to it, to be able to say, without padding it.
Yeah, okay.
Because it would have been a total guess.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Commissioners, any other discussion? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, discussion and possibly take action to appoint five members of the Hunt County Evaluation Committee for the RFP number 286-26. Hunt County requests for proposals, construction services for I-30 administration facility. The evaluation committee will be responsible for reviewing, scoring, and making a recommendation to the commissioners' court regarding the proposals received under RFP number 286-26. Commissioners, this is, of course, the Puttenhill Construction Site. We don't have to take an action on this today. Really, we can have three or five members of that committee, can't we, Daniel? You know, committee members to evaluate the proposals. We can have either three or five.
That's correct. It says to me odd.
Odd number, yeah.
And you can't have a form of the court.
Correct. So commissioners, we need to think about who, the number of people we want, and then who that, we want that to be. And certainly, we need two off of the, off of the court, and then one or three in, from other departments. I know we've used Buddy in the past, and we've used Chad and Brandon and maybe the sheriff. Sheriff, you do it one time? Yeah. So we don't have, we're not getting the proposals back till the first part of December, so we got some time to think about it and evaluate it. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention and see if anybody had any suggestions or just get it on everybody's mind so that we can come up with what we feel like is the right thing, whether it's three or five members and who those ought to be.
On that board, do they have to work for Hunt County, or can it be people in the public?
They don't have to, no, it can be, you can put anybody on here.
We can? Okay.
I would think it'd be a good idea to get one or two that's not a county employee to just have unbiased opinion on it.
No, I agree, that's great, yep.
Sounds like probably five then.
Yep. Yep. All right.
It can't be anybody with a conflict that.
Yeah, obviously.
It could be other people.
Right.
It would be nice if they had some level of subject matter expertise in construction, some related aspect.
Yeah, we got several construction companies around that do buildings and all that we could probably look at. All right. So we'll take this up at a later date, but we need to, we'll have to get this on one of the next two meetings so that it'll be ready to go when we can start opening the bids for the, for the awarding of the contract, start that project.
So would this, would this committee be responsible to establish the award criteria, or is that already established with the RFP adequate enough?
I don't think that it's directly, I don't think it's fully fleshed out in the RFP unless they change, I don't, I hear they put more things in the RFP about that, but it can be amended. You can come up with more in here if you want to have a more specific score. Again, I mean, that's something that you want to tell people who are in the bidding process, but I don't think that that's fully fleshed out and established in the RFP as well.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We'll put that on old business. Action item number six, agreement binding between Hunt County and Lubbock County, Texas, acting through the Regional Public Defender Office, Local Government Corporation for Capital Cases, previously known as the Regional Public Defender's Office. Substantive terms and conditions of the agreement, including fees charged to the county, are the same as the current inter-local agreement. Commissioners, this is, we're in a group of many counties that pay into that regional public service, or Public Defender's Office, which originated out of Lubbock. There's a bunch of counties that are involved in it and we pay a percentage of their budget for the year for handling capital cases. And then they represent us when we have a capital murder. They come in, defend the accused. And then we still have to pay some fees and all out of it for, I guess, witnesses and different things that come up, but they do provide the legal, is my understanding of it. So I'd entertain a motion and we approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, discussion of road standards. Commissioner Darren asked me when I first got up here about any of our road standards and all, wanted to do some discussions. Darren, you've got questions or suggestions or...
I would like to, just a clarification. So if we're going to do an upgrade, my understanding is you would go measure it, estimate the cost of an upgrade, submit that to court for approval, and then it would go to the treasurer to reduce the monies out of your budget and then you proceed to the other. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, if y'all do it, I don't, but that's, that's my understanding.
That's the way I was taught whenever I come on court in 2019.
I don't find any procedures in, in my business, procedures or law, so I'm trying to navigate.
Well, I guess the question would be, to your, to your point Darren, is, is that a protocol that we've used or is it a policy that the county has? Do we, do we know the difference?
As far as I can tell, it's never been adopted as a procedural rule. It's a policy guideline that's been used in the past. I can't find anything that says it's required.
Okay.
I guess the only other question is, is how do we make sure that Brittany or whoever it is that does our road inventory reports knows to legally change that over for GAZBIR reports that we send to the state, rating our roads or anything like that? She's got to be able to have that and submit that as well. So if roads haven't been or doesn't go through that process, how, how do we make sure that our stuff with the state and internally is up to date?
Well, and that's doubly important now because all those reporting requirements have changed a lot over the past couple of years, but the county has not adopted a policy that goes along with that. And I think it's probably time for that to happen, just so that it's super clear what the obligations are and so that the information goes back to everybody who needs to do it. Mostly the two sitting right here. But having, if you adopt a policy that requires it to come to court, then that also clarifies the record for anybody looking back in the future, trying to figure out if their road is actually a county road. Because obviously, that's a big issue that comes up from time to time as people don't know whether or not their road has been, you know, is officially under the county's maintenance obligations. And so it wouldn't be difficult to, you know, start piecing that together. We can look at what other counties have done and send, well, we'll probably have to discuss it in court because we can't just send that back and forth because of walking quorum rules. But we can bring that back to court at the next meeting and see if that's a direction that y'all want to go.
It'd only be as good as this court currently is, a new court, new members come in, they can change any policy.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That kind of policy is basically just an add-on to the budgetary limitations and the spending requirements. The court can make those rules for itself, but those can be changed as easily as a three-person vote. You can't super, you can't have a super majority quorum requirement for a policy change like that because it affects the budget of an elected official.
Okay. All right, how do you, how do you recommend we proceed with this? Did you write something up or we give you some directions and...
What we'll do is a, just a quick review to see which other counties have that sort of policy. That kind of review is easier than it used to be a couple of years ago where you'd have to kind of go to 254 different websites and look to see who had it. Now, we use many different AI tools that are, get us to that information just in a few minutes rather than multiple days. And so, you know, for a very small hourly amount or amount of hours that would go into it, we can come back two weeks from now with the kind of a lay of the land and give you the highlights of how other counties deal with that specific issue. And then if that's a direction that you want to go, we can also talk about what the impacts are, like who it would govern and how strong the fences are. Because if the idea of this is that it has to be done before any money is paid out, that's one way to do it. If it's, you know, this should be done, but mostly so that we have the right record-keeping requirements on which parts of which roads are under county maintenance, that's a very different thing. And they'll lead to different problems in the future. And so we can kind of come back with a, an overall review of the different possibilities as far as directions that you want to go with this policy. And then you can give us direction on what you want to do from there.
Okay.
And if any of y'all know about counties that already have those in place, please let us know.
Commissioner Money, is that kind of what you're looking for or you got any more?
I think Collin County does.
Okay.
I think, I'm not positive, but I think it is.
Yeah, and that is one of the things that we'll have to look at because sometime, Collin County is at the highest county population threshold for most of the things that they can do. I mean, there's only, I think, five counties or so that are bigger than that. And most of the laws that apply to counties that say what you can and can't do are built around population thresholds. So theirs is, I think, probably very different when it comes down to road policies, but it's different in a more fundamental way, which is that they don't, they have a more of a unit road system than Hunt County. And so some of those policies may not be directly applicable, but anything that could be a starting point would be useful to save time.
I would just like to see unity.
Yeah.
Where we're all doing the same thing.
I agree. All right, any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Daniel, if you'll get us some info. Action item number eight, budget year 2026-2027. Commissioner Monroe?
Okay, Judge, Commissioners, what I wanted to talk about today is we obviously just got done with the last year's budget and just started into the new budget. And during the budget process, we had talked about looking all through the year instead of waiting until the end of the year to start making decisions on the budget. And one thing that we had talked about is getting with each department head or elected official and looking at doing a, say, we're going to cut 5% across the board out of the budgets for next year. That was one idea that we had, but I think, I just wanted to open up the conversation of, to try to get the ball rolling, to start working on the budget process for next year and to see where we can actually maybe make cuts or make it, things run more efficient. And so that's why I wanted to put it on the, on the table just for discussion, to see what y'all's ideas were. And, because that's what we talked about during the budget. So I'll go ahead and start out month one.
My thing going forward, you know, we, you're right, we talked about it during budget time of doing some kind of, you know, reduction, whether it's 5% or something like that, but we all said it last time that we need to, as elected officials, they have a budget that they prepare and propose to us. They need to be responsible for that budget. We don't need to be the ones that sit up here and tell them that, you know, you need to cut this item or that item or whatever it is out of their budget. And so they need some kind of guidance going forward of if it's going to be a 5% reduction in their budget, they, they need to know it sooner than later so they can start preparing that for budget time.
Well, I think what we ought to, in my opinion, is that we ought to have a special session just to discuss this because, you know, and clearly identify, I mean, we talked about what y'all said, like 5%, but, you know, 60% of our budget is salaries. So 40% of $50 million budget and you cut 5% of that, that's only a million bucks and we're, we're looking for more money than that. And then the sheriff's department has about 15, 20% of the budget and we go cut expenses out of there, it's going to be hard to cut. I think we, we need, before we just jump out and say we want to cut a number, we need to really dig into what we've done from the last year's, where we ended up from last year's budget, what our current year budget is and see if we can find a, a better way than just saying 5% maybe. We may need a different strategy is what I'm saying.
Staggering it based on the cost. I, I think the, the important part is in special session to get organized around it.
Correct.
But is giving all of our department heads ample time to focus on things to improve, to reduce costs wherever they can, however much they can. And I think that the, one of the things that we often see is we're focused at budget time on revenue. You know, how much money are we going to have? And then we get budgets and that becomes how much money we're going to spend. And I think we need, this would be an opportunity to get folk, people to focus on...
Spending first.
What's the cost? Let's, let's reduce our spending, let's reduce our cost and put an emphasis on that, but not have to do it in a two-week window because we're about to prove a budget. Let's give people time to do it, make sure that we've formally advised them and, you know, and look over their recommendations and in some cases even help just with, with things we can go look at. Overhead costs are a great place to go look at things. The, you know, our spyglass, you know, thing where we're looking at our, our internet and our phone and our cell usage and all that, you know, we're seeing some benefits there. How much? Well, I don't know yet, but any, anything like that, you know, revisiting, you know, we talked about the enterprise agreement. Enterprise agreement's been a great thing for us, just validating, is it still the best agreement for us? Is it still getting the return that we need or is a restructuring, does that make sense? I think, I think anything where people have those overhead kind of things, but you're right, I won't, I won't keep going because that's what the special session would be for, but that, that's to get people thinking differently about, about our annual budget as far as it being cost and revenue.
Right. Well, that's why I wanted to get off this 5% because I don't really think it's a percent number. I think it's an overall procedure that we're going to have to look at. So I agree with everything you said.
And that was the 5%? Was this the starting point?
I know, and we talked about it.
This to get the conversation started?
Yeah, I know.
Well, the 5% was a, was a number that was used to show that, not, not this coming year, but the year after, that, that's the value it takes to have a balanced budget.
Yeah, 5% came up during the budget hearing, so we've been kind of throwing that around for a while, but it's, that's not the way to attack it.
Yeah, it's really...
Before the rumors get going, I'm not saying let's go fuck people and all that. I gotta go.
It's actually 27%, but that's...
Yeah.
All right. When would y'all like to start this? If we don't start it pretty quick, we're going to get into holidays and it's going to be difficult.
I'd like to have the idea fleshed out as much so we can let the department head have as many months to work on things as possible.
You thinking about like next week, having a special session or, what days we have available next week?
I don't have the commissioner's court number.
Okay. Well, you can send out, well, you can send it out, yeah, you can send it out later today or get it to Brittany or whatever and get some dates and then we'll try to get it set for next week, one day. And, and then we'll, we'll go from there and we, Daniel, will you have the road stuff done by then maybe or at least?
We can definitely get that done by then.
So we can put those two on a discussion for a special session next week?
Yeah, if you get it out today, you can have it any day next week.
Right. Okay. Well, we'll look at everybody's schedules and the courtroom availability and see what we can get done. All right. Action item number nine, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities that will cross County Road 2513 in precinct two under normal stipulations.
Motion to approve under normal stipulation?
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 10, upgrade of approximately 220 feet of County Road 4726 from dirt to rock in precinct four, money is an escrow.
Money is an escrow and I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, the replat of lots 12 and three of Fort Longhorn Edition in precinct two. Brian, you want to brief us?
Developer contacted me wanting to take these two lots and turn them into several residential lots. He did have to have some elevation work done. There were some ponds on the property that were concerned. They meet all our standards as far as, as the frontage and everything else. So it's on a private road, but that's, that's existing, so.
Okay.
Was, was this the one that, that the folks came in on the water issue with the ponds?
No.
That's a different one?
No, different one.
But Brian, this one made all the, the county, or the subdivision rules and things, right? I mean, so there's really nothing we can do to say no on it, right? Or, I mean, we could, but...
Yeah, it meets all the, all the, the requirements for the subdivision regs.
We still have to have a public hearing though.
Yes.
Any other questions before we open up to the public? At this time, I'll open the replat of lots 12 and three of Fort Longhorn Edition in precinct two to the public. Anybody wish to speak for or against the replat? Come forward, state your name and give us your address, please.
My name's Jerry Johnson.
Come to the mic, please, sir, so we can get you on record.
My name's Jerry Johnson, 8487 Private Road 2416, Quineland, Texas. I'm kind of new at all of this. I've never done anything like this. I don't think it's right to take and come in and, when we bought the land, it was five acres or more plots. Of course, that was 44 years ago. Now they're breaking it up into one and a half acre lots, putting seven, best I can tell, seven new additions on our road when we've only got 14 people on the road to help pay for rock and upkeep on the road. It is a cut-through from 2412 to 2400. If the bottoms washed out down there, 2400, everybody and their grandma cuts through on our road. Nobody from the county or any, does anything about it. I've asked them to put a sign up down there saying no cut-through or the road's out, you know, quarter of a mile down the road, turn on 2412 to keep from having to go on our private road.
So y'all's is one closed? 2416 is the one that's closed and I can't go through?
2400 was flooded out for five years.
Okay.
Going to poetry.
Okay.
If you go south on, or north on that, it floods down in the bottoms. There's no signs or anything telling how deep it is. And I know it's been about three or four foot deep, at least 100 yards wide down through there. Like I say, I don't know if we can put anything on the agenda about if it floods for the gentleman that's subdividing it up since he did fill up the stock tanks. If that backs water up on somebody else's land, who's accountable for that? I know he's going to, or I have the feeling that he's going to sell these off and be gone. And there's, then who do, who do you, you know, who's accountable for it?
Y'all have a road maintenance association amongst your members?
Yes, sir, we do. Myself, Mr. Smith... Myself, Mr. Smith and my wife.
Is it a record or is it just a verbal agreement between y'all?
Just, well, we keep records, we charge $10 a month or $120 a year.
Is there anything, was it filed when you bought it or when the plat was done originally?
Well, we've got, I don't know what, what they actually called it, but we're.
Deed restrictions?
The county, the county said we had to put in a 12-foot, or 12-inch culvert 20-foot long on each one of the driveways. And at one time it was a county road. When they changed it from 911 to back and down, converted over to 911, they said that's the reason they didn't want it anymore. So we kind of formed our own little road committee. Like I say, we got 14 people on there, 11 of them pay. And if you don't, aren't able to collect money, it takes four or five years at $10 a month to make it worthwhile to sue, to get you money. And then you make somebody mad, you got people fighting in the street, which I've seen. I would like for Mr. and Ms. Go and, if, if it's all right for me to say whatever, they need to go to a doctor's appointment.
Okay.
Is that all right with y'all for me to?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I didn't know if y'all wanted.
Go ahead for a little bit and then I'll go.
Well, that's about all I've got. I mean, I know 2400 floods in two places, 2412 floods, 1565 floods, 35 floods when we get one of the big rains, you know? And I actually, years ago, seen water over 276 at 2412. We haven't had a road sign telling our name, our street and the county road for two years. We've called and asked for them to put a, put a sign up. We finally made our own street sign. Other than that.
So are you looking for, you know, signage to be developed better for the community to, to manage traffic or are you asking for the plat not to be approved?
Well, the plat, like I say, I, I don't think the plat should be put in. I think we ought to have been able to leave it five acres and not even break it down, but that's just my opinion.
So, but more interested in getting traffic control with signage and things is?
Because I guarantee you, when he sells that land, whoever moves in there, you might have three or four out of the seven pay the dues and then you got to wait to be able to sue them or make it worthwhile to sue them. There is a, on plot 12, by the barn on the northwest corner, there is a culvert and a driveway there, plus a 100-foot easement where that power line runs up there. To me, if a developer is going to develop, make him put his own road in there for that 11 acres. Then they can stay off our road, but that's just my opinion. And I do thank y'all for letting me speak.
You bet.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to speak for or against it?
Brian, will that road require a, a road upgrade?
Well, it's a private road, so we can't.
It's a private road.
Hang, hang on.
It's a private road, so.
So we legally can't require them to upgrade it?
That's it. It's a, it's a private road that was established by the plat back in 1980.
Do you know if they any deed restrictions or homeowner association record or anything?
I could find nothing on an HOA, not from any, any of the documents. They did have deed restrictions and bylaws. The deed restrictions and bylaws state, there's one that states one house per lot, but there's nothing that says that the lots can, there's, there's nothing putting an acreage stipulation on, on any of them. There's also a replat that was done down the road in the mid 2000s that created a, a bunch of two and a half acre lots. The majority of the lots in Fort Longhorn were five acres or larger.
So other parts of Fort Longhorn have been subdivided or had replats on them?
Yeah, there was a replat down the road on lot eight that was done, I believe in 2005 or, yeah, dropped, cut them down to two and a half acre lots.
Okay.
When was that development originally made?
1980.
1980?
Yes.
Daniel, should we look at those restrictions closely to make sure we're not in violation of the restrictions? Are they enforceable against us?
Are you talking about CCR restrictions or restrictions that are on the plat?
Both, I guess. The original plat and there's probably no other than that, but.
Okay.
But CCR, yeah.
No, those are not enforceable against the county and the county doesn't have the legal ability to enforce them. The residents out there that are under the same umbrella of CCRs can sue to enforce them, but the county is, has to treat it as if those don't exist under the way that the subdivision rules have been amended over the past seven or eight sessions.
Okay. So we can't, we can't really turn it down then because of?
Not using that as its, as a sole basis.
Sure, yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
So, so if we did say we do turn it down, what, what's the repercussions or where do you go? What would happen?
Well, that's, we should probably discuss that in executive session, but it could lead to liability against the county. If you say no to approving the, the changes, then you have to, within a certain time period, I think 15 days, send a written list of the specific reasons why the county had authority to do that under state law and what the specific issues are that meant that the proposed change was either illegal or offensive under health, safety and wellness ideas. So if, if somebody wanted to put, you know, 85 tiny homes on a one acre lot, there's a bunch of health and safety reasons to turn that down. Those kind of evaporate when you're talking about moving from a five acre down to a one and a half acre. I'm not aware of any reason why there's a health and safety issue on this one, but there may be. That's not anything I've looked at.
So the gentleman that spoke against it said that originally it was two lots and now there's going to be seven. Can we require the developer to upgrade that road or spend money on that road before we approve it since he's adding more traffic to it? Do we have that authority?
Private road.
I understand it's a private road, but to approve, approve a plat, do we have any authority?
I haven't seen anything that.
Does it meet the?
It meets our regulations.
It meets everything.
But they are changing it and.
The original plat had a 50-foot wide easement on the road. They are dedicating an additional 10-foot since our requirement is 30 feet from the centerline or 60-foot wide. It's not a dedication, it is just a 10-foot additional access easement for this plat. But there's, there's nothing that I've found that will enable us to require a private road upgrade.
Have you been in there to look at it?
I'm, I'm familiar with the area.
What's the road like?
South Hunt County Gravel Road, just been, been maintained by, by Mr. Johnson and the neighbors over the years. It's, it is a passable road. It's, it's not a horrible road. It's not like some that are down in that, in that part of the world that we've seen around, some of the private roads around the county that are, that are impassable. It is a, it's a passable county road that goes back down in there and, and like you said, it serves as a, a cut through for a lot of traffic from, from one county road to another. They just, they turn and cut down that road.
Is the owner here?
Who?
Is the owner here?
Nope, I don't.
Would, would it be an option if we talked to the, the developer and had him to upgrade that road to county specs and then actually take that road in as a county road? Would that be an option?
If he owns it. I don't know who owns.
The road?
Well, if it, if it was.
He only owns half of.
Prescriptive easement.
No, it's a dedicated easement.
Or is it a right of way?
It's a.
Oh, it's a platted easement.
We require an upgrade on roads, on plats that aren't private roads. But I don't know, do we have the rules to make him upgrade it to, under the current rules?
Is there a shot clock on this or anything?
Yeah, we're at it.
Brian, just curious, you said that at one time, or the gentleman said at one time, it was a county road? Have you, any research validate that?
I can't, I can find nothing that, that says it was ever a county road. Even on the plat, it shows us just a 50-foot wide roadway. It shows the, the county roads on the plat as county roads.
Okay. What, what year was it, 80s in the?
1980.
80?
There's nothing in the, the deed restrictions or bylaws that state private road or county road.
They did.
The restrictions are actually fairly basic. There's, there's really nothing in the deed restrictions.
What was the dedication on the plat?
Do what?
What was the dedication on the plat?
The dedicational?
On that old plat, yeah. What had the dedication read?
A 50-foot wide road, that's all it says. 50-foot road.
But it doesn't say if it's dedicated or anything?
No, but the county roads say county road.
Is that the plat?
This is the original plat.
I would love a copy of that.
I can get you one. There, you can get them from the clerk.
I just have a suggestion, I don't know if it'd do any good. I would love to be able to buy a rock at a discounted price through the county.
I don't think we can do that.
Dang it. I'll try anything.
I understand, I don't blame you.
I don't, I don't want to say something to get me thrown in jail because the wife's still told me she wasn't coming after me.
You better sit down then. Uh. Daniel?
Yeah?
Let me read that dedicate, or that. Says it dedicated it to the public.
Yeah, it's the first half of the sentence, but the second half is, if the county's not accepting it.
Yeah, so.
So it doesn't, I mean, he didn't do that as a requirement under the rules that existed back then, and he's saying.
There probably wasn't any rules back then.
Yeah.
I think first rules.
That is a written version of a prescriptive easement rather than a dedication and acceptance.
Okay. So we don't have really any, anything to go with to get them to do something else?
No, I don't think that we did. I mean, they could do a road construction assessment with a petition and then the, the property would be assessed like property taxes to pay for upkeep and construction. Generally, that only works against 100 houses or so.
What if we approved this on condition that the developer upgraded the road?
We should go, we can go into executive.
Talk about it, okay. All right. I think we're, we're going to set this aside and go into executive session in a little bit and talk about it and we'll come back and act on it after we get out of executive session. All right. Action number number 12, the final plat of banded addition in precinct three.
Okay, banded addition. One lot plat, this one's on a private road and they do have a road maintenance association that was, that was created somewhat recently for this road. This is an issue Commissioner Martin and I had dealt with this several times over the years. And you've got a, a road, a private road that was created, never dedicated, never platted, nothing was ever done with it. It was, it was built, it just never was developed. Then the developer came in, started, well, maybe not even the developer, an owner, after this thing had been created, came in, started selling lots off around this road. It was done back over the years, you know, back in 2000s and then in the 90s. So it was illegally sold off, illegally done, came to our attention whenever someone else wanted to create a lot down there. So I told them in order to do it, they needed to create this road maintenance association to guarantee maintenance of the road to, because the road had never really been created, never officially been created. So they did. They created a road maintenance association, includes everybody who adjoins the private road, everybody who could use the private road for access. So they actually have, they have put this association in place to take care of the maintenance of this road. One of the few that come through and, and actually do what they're supposed to to guarantee that this road's going to be taken care of.
So how'd they create that organization? I mean, is it, it's part of a deed? I mean, is it just when you break ground?
Had to get the adjacent owners.
Articles of association, they, they create an association and then everybody who owns property.
How do I make, if I, if I go out there and buy a lot today and want to put a house on there, how do they make me pay?
I'd, I'd be glad to forward you that information, it's in the subdivision regulations.
Okay. For, for private?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. What, what's required on private roads?
It's all civil, right? It just all be civil?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's how to, how to create the association, what's required of the association and dedication of, of what the association's going to own. They're actually dedicated the right of way as if they were, were the county, but they're actually the owners of the right of way. It's not the, the individual lot owners that, that adjoin it, it's the association, so.
No intentions of that ever being turned over to the county? No plans or anything like that?
Nope. They like, they like to keep their gate up and keep the, the local traffic out.
All right. Any other questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brian. Anything else today before the court? Not, we'll go into executive session under 551071. Michael, Daniel?
That's right.
And so we're going into executive session at 11:27 under 551071. It's 11:27. Thank you, Brian. Anything else today before the court? Not, we'll go into executive session under five-five-one-oh-seven-one. Matt, Daniel? And, uh, so we're going into executive session at eleven-twenty-seven under five-five-one-oh-seven-one. It's, uh, eleven-twenty-seven.
Steve-O, you got us up?
Not yet. My phone went to sleep.
All right, we're up.
All right, we're back in regular session at 12:41. Action item number 11, the replata lots 12 and 3 of Fort Longhorn addition in precinct 2. Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else before the court today? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? We're adjourned at 12:42. Thank you.